Madam Luwitu Tal, Mura'arau roguu. Luwitu Tal Legorgaue Vice Presidenta Senator Mariur, Floor Leader Senator Aldabel, Mar Senator Suroguil Martian. Kadu madanganiwa si el ania kotel siles re la longe widl regular sesion ergid, bo kua asmrel tiang el kotel siles re la longe widl regular sesion ergid el mura'arau der. Tiriga mura'ulgul.
Senator Retsis Agitaya. Senator Gubai Kikuo Inabo.
Oi.
Senator Jonathan Shoy Saal.
Oi.
Senator Stevenson Jay Kuarte.
Oi.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasau.
Oi.
Senator Mark Uervalau Rudim.
Oi.
Senator Umi Sangabau.
Oi.
Senator Kazuki El Taps Sungino.
Oi.
Senator Andrew Tabelwald.
Oi.
Senator Mason Niree Bangal Whipps.
Oi.
Floor Leader Cecilil Aldabel.
Oi.
Vice President Kalai Mariur.
Oi.
President Hocoins Paulas.
Oi.
Mr. President Angania Kurum.
Maria Kurum bodontira Senator Aldabel niya floor leader ergid mal bolongtigai leader aureled niya targidra Senator Agitaya excuse Senator Aldabel.
Mr. President, mutel madam Luwitu Tal Mergaume Vice Presidenta Mariur, mar bekal Senator seninmasa biel mertil first day ra regular, seven regular sesion. Nasala, Mr. President, tegadamom mal mol mertil atjen targid man dekangar sel Iron Four, sel debor sel Iron Five angani gel message senara avis a datorium m'di denouta tiang transmitara Presidential Directive Number Niya 22-51. Diregal angania Prescom 11-190 et tiang adoration to release sel trans two of the Policy Base Rises Loan by 2023. Gladutri l communication m'diregal bodomis ringi se debora appropriate partra kalender. Diregal angania Prescom 11-191 niya transmita sel National Security Act of 2022. Diregal angania Prescom 11-192 niya introduce a Search and Rescue Act. Diregal proposal mo Search and Rescue Act ablur belau. Diregal Prescom 11-193 niya introduce a mo anti-human trafficking bill ablur belau m'diregal bodomis ringi. Sel mo l'obongala Prescom 11-194 niya introduce sel l'ngilngil FY 2023 Budget Bill. Masula President, nasela tirkliatia timinga tiang fiscal year budget. Egegi de, Mr. President, au knar avis a Presidente mei debor sel dolmol mal mor sel dekangar six ma seven. Uk'tabora standing committee reports. Ma m'upmada adoptra Standing Committee Report 11-18 niya girela Senate Resolution 11-80.
Segida motion namdung e segna. Boguntira Chairman Educaison Senator Tabelwald ma bolbiskidar report Senator Tabelwald.
Lo si Presidente madam Luwitu Tal Mergaume, madam Luwitu Tal Mura'arau roguu Senatorso. Komrengasaurate al ibododur si tiang Senate Standing Committee Report 11-18 il kangestere sel Senate Resolution 11-80 kiay sel mutel omutke la misu manauon el mutel mo'odal abordra Palau Community College. Misera onirau merbuira liu matalkap singe represente tiang resolutiona m'norau laul ekau dur sin mea community education. Oguk sekide l'omrael ekadamno utmaklaurare del girel tiang omutke la misuon mortial mo'odal abordra Palau Community College. Adomis ay gel otsusira ay gel babeni la misuon ekadam tigilwa sen ganga obabachilas degree ringira University of Hawaii Hilo ediregal milamol mal monga master's degree ringira public health ra University of Hawaii at Manoa. Nganga, diregal sekide bolmera school in m'loruor. Mongatatrigel m'lo ngaklurora trust secretary government tenara vok professional we have nineteen eighty three ma nineteen eighty five. Yawriu sen milamol mal m'loruor Northern Mayanas College m'le classroom instructor, emotive examiner at TD Program, m'lo federal coordinator, yawriu m'lo academic advisor counselor on Northern Mayanas Community College. Sel time ra l'uror sen diregal m'le test administrator for educational testing services tiya serolto daru wasa test ma toful en gaya ulongra'ar ser ablurula on Northern Mayanas serattemel ngasengi. Seratu tausin ngamle gairan m'le ablur belau esera alminga egideral bilbora private sector elo ngaralero rurtur sel Best Coffee in Donut House. Gidahim dangni beklar. Oguk tiagil l'uror ger diregal l'udarsa bebir ra girel m'ongi elo ogera ay gel koraual lungulir may gel udu swir girel tiang omutkel. Mongu'luwaisi girel wa sen ganga mutel malamol mal swal moro guai gel awarral la mutel metutka. Ediregal wa sen diakawara esusma ngiril siowai ngarankle mo'kora momli ekreni tiang l'uror ediregal man cc abedangani diakawara araktel m'sarel mo'walgora mu'ulem mu'malainga songsa w'reerel albol adra abordra Palau Community College. Mongadiregal m'la diakadil alabala abordra Palau Community College m'la alabala Board of Health Professionals, Palau Parole Board ediregal m'la alabela bellout Tourism Association ediregal m'la alal sel bellout Education and Employers Association monganga abutok abordra blangangi m'kloklegigenga ngira outdoor board. Kadiregal l'ulugiraniwa sen ngarao singe ra aurelela Palau Community College m'el mutre l'arsel time ngaralcel nguasiya PCC m'ralbu l'uei elo trukoklaurarel sel accreditation al truklungin ende diregal m'lu'uliatogol wa sen diakadil accreditation akaututire m'diregal girel make sure sel lungil se baklir arngal malu'ugangwelbinga ngarangal girengas school agiril sel baakle siya diregal ta'togol niya amalgora sawalgritreni l'mbedanganiwa si sel lungila semaklira omutkilar ngalga marandir ra school ngaralcel eg motara uletemusi ilmo'ongi sel baakle roguu omsubir ma to'bra school. Mongadilwa babeniwa si inselul bekel aurele del beklar eg musi edelo siga omirollelemo omilaran ngal girel mosuis ra school ediakan m'gim del motobdel g'aula'ulani la schoolir. Kadiregal l'ulugiraniwa sen ngarabi bebir ay gel wesir walgora m'le albongela Palau Community College at time ngaralcel niya ulanganiwa si schoola man'ongi lo'degedra ay gel ngaralir eh r'ugulu ra'ngal ngal galo degedratir ediregal lo'suril lo'degedratir make sure ta'ampitai gel lo'omsu biralcela at time ngaral school et to'del momel mal ubetemom m'aurior. Ay gel bebir ra l'ulugirwa sen ngari amle gora m'lo'odil logiwa COVID nineteen ya school omusuis pralcel eg wasia Palau Community College atara egel school nemre' del sumaklir sekide togoi elo ya palasira COVID free in school environment m'lo subaklir arngal ra school mar sentei mar adeltir l'uror misia atara amle klow l'omsu ma omlo' del Palau Community College niya amlaralcel. La adra boardi obongela President ma adra Palau Community College egutmaklir sekide togora schoolir ratsis pralcela COVID nineteen. Sel ta'ulugiraniwa si magararu lele musi be'el mastiraran ngal girel degel mosuis wa malamol mal roguu schoolir eg wasia atara adawala girel melisi raran ngal girel matamomudu uselwal l'uduswir marandir l'tbirarandir ma school em olodigedra ay gel albongira school musi itog siya atara girel wa sen tra girel l'urareal et togoi wa si kadam magarasmis tiraran ngalga m'sel omutkilarandir mosuisup am cc ilmalamol mal lo'degedra w'reerel et to'bra school sekide atara w'real et togoi eg girel et mugiler albongiran ngal girela Palau Community College. Sel diregal l'ulugiraniwa hiring ma komrengasurira adra committee members m'lela hiring eg musi be'el tokado gel togoi kangestera udu swir may gel niya gora omutkel girel tiang togora al mutel mo'odal abord. Kadam bedanganiwa si l'ongilw'reerel n'esawasia l'utel mol utel m'ongi l'uror niya amal no'mgatakla ay gel walgora angarargul wa sen. Angania blatsu birai gel awarrak eg angania egitmok m'ding wasi oguk ay egidil blaltsu may gel omutkel al l'utel mon ende diakalokol musi el cc iat togora school mo'akotel accreditation akaututire m'diregal sel tram l'ulugirwa si kadam magarange o'do'trigel ngal girel mosuis matamom break. M'digel mosuis be'ukno'mta'arusir mandiabon break kadam magarage m'diregal mos cc atrentingi raprokorona Palau Community College. Bo si el diregal mo'usutir degel ogukno'mta'arusir diakal roguu schoolir bo si getirida osutirim l'utel ma school el roguu schoolir ay gel gidakwara albongela ay gel rogu' m'le el do du'usel hiring degedamno'tma'arau gu'e mal longi remengsa'ongi l'ulungulir edo l'mbedanganiwa egel ngi' katmaklil l'uror blalkatmakl may gel sel omdasen mo'ukmokra m'rael m'le awarrak ma k'obongela committee malu'ngita arangela laulala si medelutel motmak edo ngi' tiari port edo drutel gongera misuon boladala board eh agadomra'ala wasia egal l'urarel adodar al mutel m'ongi l'uror adlutel gongerin. Segida arangela report President tegamansula.
Sula ni Senator Tabelwald ramalu'ngil report il girela misuon Maria swal momegagamenta Senator Ishal.
Mr. President, Luwitu Tal Legorgaume Vice Presidente targid ma floor leader bekal adali na tendensen dekam membera committee m'surati al so'alimodur si asport ngare chairman Tabelwald mertil apoint ki ra. Pointment ra misuon el mortial mom member abord of Trustis la Palau Community College. Eh agumese sel tengamira datorio. Is excrencia sura esvips ti'nyura apoint ringi. Malusilwa si currently ngal misuonga has spent over two decades, that's over twenty years in the private business sector dekigil Best Coffee in Donut House. Kulasi, misuonga brings a professional experience both in education in business sectors and essential skills and institutional knowledge to continue the work and function of the world. Ak momuiw'atjaling interesting lakwasi kadamarara mor shell time il dakadito'ro rakablemente ngani opportunity mo'mosur abord. Ah blakarungu m'la private sector ken experience, ken skills and you become an asset like misuong el mom member abord Trustis la mong'g'ro si sakme meridu wasi. Lakadido amesla kablemente is a source of employment. Self-employed or private sector has a lot of rooms for training people, young kids to become. Entrepreneurs or good workers abalu eh opportunity mo'ua misuong el mo'kutlaisi niya kablemente l'mura'arau board of Trustis of Palau Community College am m'ongi. Kudongasia Presidenta will appointment ringi mangalde' l'abre'la committee m'support committee or m'ongi sula.
Sula ni Senator Ishal Senator Sangba.
Sali Presidenta, otakm'asulala Chairmana Committee Educational na'utmaklita report ni mar members dekam membera committee dimle extend the invitation and dimlo fortunately m'dekal sebe'el mon ding tiagida kukwara taragerel hoping la am logera malu'ugangada kasen metiang anding malwara gige'deral uk'k'wara ng'auduswe. Nisakalogera kuaseng wangara assessment ra alu'ugangaria annual performance sel assessment ra Presidenta institution. Ak malakalwaisi l'ongla'oo twenty-three years sel ngarasi. Ngaria ngaria egel lukaseng three sixty feedback. Ay ge assessment tel el mobangal assessera al lidera institution m'diregal mo'interviewer l'uror ngarobongela mar k'alixir ngi'mar. And I think we need to assess that, Mr. President, among maybe alsukum la dekal sebe'el utmaklirtal uk'me hiring il ngirela adra board ndi'gundas sege'ida gel uk'ngar aleden mara policy level esel edel uk'mitel lobongela adra board well ngal'tangatangamil mangai eg uk'ta assess sege'id not just for PCC ma diregal egel bebir ra aladra ay gel board ra agency sergi'ling sel bebir ataim musi edel degid m'tiria adodo'ul uk'k'wara mo'assess sege'id ma k'marangasulem endikmal u'rekwa sege'ida m'diregal sebe'el uk'k'waramo sma ne'ne'seriflet a report eh I know they've done a great job ndi'gundas ng opportunity teridil of le Chairman Education uk'mo'msase egutmaklir sula.
Sula ni Senator Sangba Senator Tabelwald.
Soal Presidente, soal la Senator Sangba na adresis sel madam Luwitu l'uldaso m'di konform lobongetela se membo'waisi bo'mrektiang e budalela'kle tigida bache'te l'el bangani mongu'yu sekide podolugirar adani l'sebe'el uk'k'waramo kme'da sege'ida tegel tri'wa sege'id girel gire wangaro'omrolit gladutri l'toko' e ngilabo'do'ngi sula.
Digangodo. Sum digangodo tirge'roguil gongertel Standing Committee Report 11-18 il girela amiswong l'dooi.
Oi.
Om'tok. Namangaya committee report floor leader.
Mr. President, kadam magamangaram committee reports dekam m'upmada passa adoptra Standing Committee Report 11-19 tiang uk'iresel Senate Resolution 11-81.
Segida motion namdung e segna dalutron tirat Chairman Educaison Senator Tabelwald ma bolbiskidar report Senator.
Lo si Presidente, kman surate al me'kulturke gulmitra se do'idiya ulawal mora Vice Chairman Sungino bolongtela committee luk'odrisi ti'ari port sula.
Senator Sungino.
Madam Luwitu Tae Presidente, madam Luwitu Tal Mura'arau roguu Senatorso. Agurangasulala Chairman Tabelwald musu'el mskakati al ma kmo'report tiang committee report tiang Senate Standing Committee Report Number 11-19 ablutri l'el sel Senate Resolution Number 11-81. Committee gara education amle asanet ti'agidil el resolution m'le committee sel uk'k'wara m'ktiga resolution amo konformer presidential appointment tra Mr. Joseph Anastasio m'surbal member of Palau National Scholarship Board for a term of four years. Ege'el resolutiona blim introducing Mr. President sel atun twenty-one twenty-two r'afortay six special sesion ergid. Musu'elaga mitil el ngua resolution in m'lo'utmaklaurarel m'lo'umulusil mora Mr. Anastasio m'larabresu m'eri ediregal m'la nyagora questioner l'blensendel m'ongi musu'el uk'henzi ay gel ngara sel bebir. Mong'blakatak m'ngal Mr. Anastasio amle earn rabatsel degree ringira Computer Science ra University of Hawaii Hilo. Diregal m'le earn associate degree ringira Information Technology ra Palau Community College. Awriu ra graduate ra University sel UH University of Hawaii twenty-eighteen Mr. Anastasio amle return l'merbelau m'su'el m'uriora Palau Public Utilities Corporation m'le financial system analyst sel ediregal sel accounting and finance department. Eh l'uror seridil droal m'le l'al time. Sel atuni nineteen, Mr. Anastasio m'lu'su'el mo'ukmo' l'uriora Palau Community College m'le adjunct instructor of Computer Science and Information Technology. Ya previous eh ge'idil sel aguk'ngara schoola Hawaii m'le server research assistant el mora Research Corporation ra University of Hawaii Hilo. A prior professional career of Mr. Anastasio nganga, diregal m'le student intern ti'agidil te'mel ngaratgora Galits. M'le server l'ra intersebringira m'la intersebringira Pacific Island Climate Change Cooperative r'ablur Hawaii sel twenty-fifteen. Diregal m'lo'ra kalo, ke'aho'loa, stem scholars r'ablur Hawaii Hilo, Hawaii twenty-sixteen and twenty-eighteen. M'diregal m'le intern ti'al Palau National Scholarship Board of sel twenty-sixteen. Ediregal finalim m'le internal Ministry of Education sel twenty-seventeen. Sel uk'kusumera Mr. Anastasio amal m'le'tmol m'la'ngi sekide questioner ma questioner ay gel questioner m'la'sekide l'questioner ak'ul'giraniuk ma'sera rabakrondringi m'experience ringi. M'le respond ra Mr. Anastasio m'lela committee. Amal mil'ok ma'semal mo'gongel mo'su'bagel full for your term ringi al sumak'ngol'tangat m'lo'osu'be'el apoint ringi. Ediregal mo'diakawara business connection ringi malu'ugang financial connections ringi el mora ngildil shobara community. Ediregal diakawara committee, diakal fit of interest ringi il girela ti'al droal. M'ccsi abedangani eh diakawara saril eh um'rangak ma'sel botti'el droal m'la'morak prababelsu'el el m'otmokla ay gel l'urarel ti'el board. Diregal diakal member any authority malu'ugang government organization, non-government organization. Committee diregal m'le askra Mr. Anastasio gora o'aisa egel experience ringi l'gorasube'el masa alo'osama do il girela ay gel ngaralil mo'adra board. Mongal Mr. Anastasio amal neinforma committee ma'sen nganga m'le'ta student ra school m'le'ta l'atagid program ra Palau National Scholarship Board. Malmedangalia alcela ma ay gel nesul ngilai may gel uk'challenges el blel face sel ngaral school. M'sekide l'experience ringi ra atagidil tre'tail ah um'rangak ma'sel abol ngatte'el el eg mal mo'uk'mskitsel ol'osengel a student sel ngaralcela program el al time el receive a scholarship el ol'osertir school. Committee diregal m'le askuk'mo'am describe ay gel performance ra Palau National Scholarship Board. El al blat to'del el uk'musu'el el gora recommend el m'oswir ti'el board improve ay gel tre'telela nesul mora ngaral school ngara school. Mong malulu akotl m'le'ensirngi amal l'ulurengasulala PNSP summer fellowship program. Segida tamal m'le m'ccsi el gora program ra ti'el scholarship board m'le unco'el sentais ringi el return home. M'noria te'el el l'uror seral ngar sege'id program sel ever ablur bela'ong'uror eh networ k'lobentri degel gora m'le tiragidil uk'mo future employers ringi. M'noria te'el el gora l'uror abalu eh l'uror lobentri arbe'pada'ngi ar'af eh gora momda'ngi a role el ma ulm'uk mloklot te'el m'lerbelau. Diregal obongela se committee m'le askra Mr. Anastasio ra ay gel challenges el face PNSP ma uk'igel role el s'el address asumo'mo member abord. Mr. Anastasio m'le responduk ma'sen um'rangak mo' ngirel m'or ya up-to-date reporting. Ediregal m'le'mo ediregal ngirel m'atmaklaurior l'mo'engage ra degel student may gel success etir ra ti'el scholarship. Ediregal ngirel highlight sege'idi um'rangak ma'sege'ida m'diregal shasingerid el mesat ti' program eh eguk cc. PNSP m'diregal ngirel invest ra aral ra school, degel to'bra school. L'mo'su'el return el m'le ablur belau. Ediregal l'um'rangak ma'sel aborda girel l'mo'obius ol'osengel, ngirel ay gel funding ma student success degal ngalga m'diregal mara atgora school. Degal l'um'rangak ma'sel aborda girel el mega positive change el mora gire rogu' program etir. Ediregal um'rangak ma'sel sel ngaral school m'diregal ngania time degel uk' degel ay gel gora boners ra ti'el program amitra students eg uk'k'wara engage lobentir m'adodu'urtir. L'gora engorits etir m'mosu'el il gora aklor'ngir ma'sel programa malamol mal ngania communication between the donor mar gal'ra school. M'temo'adanganiuk ma'sen ngaray gel ngalsangisir may gel ngaray gel gora akos etir soril achip. Mr. Anastasio m'diregal m'le she'abebira information il girela ay gel challenges el blel face asa Palauan student. Ediregal l'gora tumalisel te'elir ma te'elir ngalga atgora sa'akalits. M'ndiregal m'lu'ais ra sel uk'experience ringi ra kaltsusyak sel al'otl mora college life l'wablawal oroid ra parents m'walgora dimla m'ongi eh dingiro'uk sikro'el eh ogore matogora bache'tingera kale'ela ma transportation ringi ma ablil ay ge'idil gora modoktaging ngoraual m'diregal gora moditer ra atogon ngalga k'ampitaa ay ge'idil schoolir. M'diregal mal l'um'rangak ma'sen ngirel ngirela board m'diregal mo'gora release sege'el el program l'musu'be'el m'adodu'ur ngalga eh gora m'or ya orientation may ge'idil gora magegaril bol'or ngalga sel oral mora school l'moroid ra abalu mar adra abliris. Mr. Anastasio um'rangak ma'sen nganga team player m'lamol mal um'rangak ma'sen ng'oyak sege'el l'uduswir l'uror esetim eh m'ol'ulobentri degel bebir ra adra board g'ol'ngal'tangat m'le'mingilt. L'mo'osiga egidil togora te'al ma nesu may gel uk'chenses ra palasil s'el moswira ngalga el utmaklaurarel esu student. L'um'rangar ngi'ak ma'sel adra board abipada'ngi ra to'gel k'agrous abakrondurtir eh niya metmul ke'grel'af ediregal uk'ngar ngi'sel gora du'ngi ra atagidil coming fresh out of Galits m'su'el uk'pringers sege'id l'mor a table l'uk'msada'egel challenges ra student. Awriu ra committee ra receive ra ay gel egel written response ra Mr. Anastasio m'lo'su'el r'atsura six twenty-two m'noria gora mol el understanding ra committee para rogu' members m'di atendra hearing. Musu'el Mr. Chairman Tabelwald ma Vice Chairman Sungino ma floor leader Aldabel ma Senator Ramasau atendra atagidil hearing ngalgu'ido. A committee amal gamendra sel willingness ra Mr. Anastasio l'my turn el m'le ablur belau r'awriu ra graduate ra school. Ediregal mal o'engar ngi'te'egel uk'ngirngi teleappointment ringi mo'member abord eh mal lungil shasig eh lotisel investment r'ablur belau il girela ay gel el adal m'la'mo'askulil m'latka' program ra PNSP eh lam'la k'ayasel m'le ablur belau uk'me ol'ol'tes ol'musel ablur belau ran is Anation Building may gel uk'sebeloda'el m'ongosuk'tir degel mara lo'yakuri l'ngal'ra school. Ediregal mal lobongela se committee amal m'diregal el elaborate degel sel el response ra ngal namini eh, girela, tri gel students, eh, attend a universities. Eh, me informa, eh, nga lnamini, ma se, se gidel personal experience dringi, ma ige gidel guk trete lela school, ma, eh, ngesu, eh, gina ra scholarship, eh, me help ringil succeed, amal, eh, mo'la, osengel se gide, eh, mal mo'oswira Palau National Scholarship Board. Eh, ma lo umranga, ma se ige gidel, te gidel ludi'asu, sel labora, eh, bo'ol'ol'ta'at, me, boro a boro, eh, mal mo'oswira PNSP, eh, lo mesi gide, eh, ngesu, mora students. Diregal, hamiti, nosu'bel, oh, gyal, eh, Mister Anastasio, kungai, gyal, kau'de swem, eh, nga ra'ala, withdraw from school. Eh, lo'ais, ma se se gidel kaltsusya, amal ta'ra, koto'klo challenges, sel, eh, eh, motmo'kla mora nga, eh, sel labora Galitz. Well, gukra, mak'takti nga, nga, eh, mong, mong, asang ra to'ol'tu'oi, eh, ovisi sena, eh, ra school. Mong, mal koto'tele, se gidel gukra, eh, asu, ma se bol, se bel, motmo'kla se gidel gukra, eh, orientation, eh, tri gel rogu' guk, nga, programma PNSP, mal bo'riya, gukra, vital, clown dingi, eh, nga'la, eh, sel to'ot, eh, mo'ra, ta expect, eh, sel labora Galitz. Eh, lakti la'ya rogu' tukoya, hamiti, eh, mal regamendra, pasitsra, eh, ngira, Mister Anastasio, mora da, mo'adra boro, ma lo umranga, ma se nga lugu', eh, ge'gari la'af, eh, mal rodomi, sel, gyal programma, menutkel girel, eh, the investor, eh, me ge'gari la'af, eh, mo'to'ot, eh, mo'ha'ma schoolir, eh, return, eh, mel me, olmo se ra blu, eh, ige guk, se bel odars, eh, ngila ra school. Ma, ma, hamiti, eh, mal di ak timonti, eh, ra Chairman Tavaloal, ma rogu' members, eh, mal monita, full supporter, eh, gal, gires ti al nomination, eh, Mister Anastasio, mo'member, eh, Palau National Scholarship Board. Palmsulangi, Mister President.
Sulang, sulang, eh, Senator Sungino, eh, mal lungil report, eh, girel nga l, nominee. Maria Sol, me ga comment, Senator Inabo.
Eh, Mister President, konsulanga, te ell, gal comment, ak malolita support, eh, morongal, mal ge'gari la, eh, inganga, orior, eh, eh, financial system analyst, eh, PPUC, mongora, eh, sel programma, eh, otu'abila, thank you. Masel gisa, ak milol, kor, o'ngala, karingi, loa se, eh, guk mo'ongi, eh, talgi, belongi, eh, ti, sel arata, thank you, mongariwa. Abil se, ma'am. Ending, mm, ak mesang la, se, mal blakarongu, orior, eh, diregal, eh, adjunct instructor, eh, computer science, eh, ma information technology, eh, PCC. Mong, he's a hardworking, eh, young man, eh, sena nga ra schoola Hawaii, eh, mlo, kea ho loa stem scholar. Beru'ak, mla sing, mlo, scholar, eh, science, technology, engineering, and math. Mong, ki nama lo'spere, al mutalbatu'ol, nga li'edan, mongari, gage, morong, nga ra stem program. Mong, mosse, eh, del, advanced analytical, gira, eh, ige, eh, internet, ma, base, eh, technology, eh, blu, la, ma. Ak malolita support, eh, morongal, ge'gari la, eh, mm, mal, gukra, eh, madu, eh, mm, l'absorb, eh, malangs, ma, eh, eh, masuva, base, eh, tukoi. Mong, ak, mal ge'gari la, eh, ndi gundas, la, se, mal mo'suba, eh, interest, eh, PNSP, eh, mutalmo'switri, eh, arbe'to'ol, nga li'edan, mosse, ito'ra school, ma, malolita support, eh, lora, eh, girela nomination, eh, nga l, ge'gari la. Sulangi, Mister President.
Sulangi, Senator Inabo. Diakangod, sum diakangod, eh, tri gidel, gonger, ti al standing, hamiti, report eleven dash one one nine, eh, girela, Anastasio, do hoy. Om tok, namaya, hamiti, report, Floridaleve.
President, kadamal, mle'una, sen standing, hamiti, reports, ma, mo' the adapter, standing, hamiti, report eleven dash one twenty, te'angaku, girel, senet resolution eleven dash seventy eight.
She da motion, namdung, eh, segnum, bugunti, eh, Senator Ngirebang, Whip, simbol, muskid, eh, hamiti, report, eh, girela David Oru'um, Senator Ngirebang.
Saurra, te'al, eh, Mister President, eh, unil tutau, mor gau, ma rogu' members, eti al blay. Et to'ubets, unil tutau, morti al, diregal nga, gala, rilgi, del gukra, amal, musega, dakti arba, la nga riya, uli, ten nga ti al, lo ren, seti al, sesu, to, sesu, no, rilgi, dre'el al tutau. Eh, Mister President, eh, hamiti, rga'ra, foreign affairs and state matters, eh, mo'ofera, standing, hamiti, report eleven dash one two zero, eh, mosad, eh, girela, senate resolution eleven dash seventy eight. Te'al senate resolution eleven dash seventy eight, eh, resolution, eh, confirmed, eh, appointment, eh, Mister David E. Oru'um, eh, mo'ambassador, eh, blura bela, eh, mora blura, Republic of China, Taiwan. Lo'aisi, Mister President, te'al resolution, eh, adingilura, June twenty one, eh, two thousand twenty two, eh, gamne, asay, eh, rilgi, morti al, hamiti, rga'u, for review and reporting. Eh, hamiti, rga'u, sena l'utti, report, eh, Mister President, eh, diregal, ul'tabdi, eh, questioner, mora, namini, eh, mla riya, te ell, la namini, eh, guk, eh, ensir, eh, questioner, eh, ba'gal, mer hamiti. Awera, kura, eh, di'tar, eh, eh, questioner, ma hearing. Eh, hamiti, eh, di'regal, mlo mes, se, lomlatke, eh, atangak, eh, President Surangal Whip's Junior, lobe'ngel, eh, attachment, eh, eh, resume, eh, Mister Oru'um, ma, moktalgi, bel gukra, oh, maga'ls, mo'dingar, eh, namini. Eh, lo'aisi, eh, sena l'omis, eh, resume, eh, hamiti, amlo'ngedngi, eh, was, eh, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, me receive, eh, associate business degree, eh, in management, from Nicolet College in Wisconsin, in nineteen eighty five. Eh, diregal, ngilua, mm, mlemol, mra schoola, eh, ngilua bachelor of science degree in public administration, with a minor in economics, in nineteen ninety four, from University of Wisconsin. Eh, from nineteen ninety five to nineteen ninety seven, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, me bat'ogel diplomatic training, eh, blen attend, in the United States Foreign Service Institute, te'angara Arlington, Virginia, mal dingara outside, eh, Washington DC. Ige training, eh, eh, mlsang, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, adu, eh, diplomacy, ma ige gukra, eh, omsodel, eh, Vienna, compen tion, eh, Vienna, compen tion, sel wal, gukra, eh, frame, mo', eh, understand, eh, ya, rogu' blura blura, eh, was, eh, wa'arada, twit, eh, diplomat, sel skump, ten nga, alcela blu'at. Ma, diregal, gukra, atu'ora, foreign relations, eh, counselor affairs, ma, eh, ma, dadi, lobe'ngela, international organizations, negotiations, ma, diregal, omsodel, eh, atetell, eh, oritella, United Nations. Eh, hamiti, rga', diregal, momtig, was, eh, nga, eh, se guk, smodi, eh, gukra, training, eh, ma, schoola, eh, la gat guk, mo', talgi, bel, mo', understand, eh, guk work experience, eh, Mister Oru'um. Eh, from nineteen eighty to eighty two, eh, nga, Mister Oru'um, eh, eh, orior, eh, Palau Tourism Commission, te'awal, awera albor, niya, PBA, eh, me, Palau Tourism Commission, eh, orior se gide. Eh, diregal, from nineteen ninety one to nineteen ninety four, eh, diknot, eh, Mister President, rose nga riya, talgi, bel typo error, alcela, eh, ti al, standing, hamiti, report, eh, it's nineteen ninety one to nineteen ninety four, not eighty four, mosse, ves. Eh, orior, under the division of economic development for the Oneida Native American Tribe of Wisconsin. Mong, orior, se, eh, me involve, eh, screen, eh, proposal, eh, eh, o, o, omsodel, although, for potential development, eh, alcel ti al tribe. Te'agora, interesting experience, eh, nga ru'bagi, Mister President, eh, te'ang, eh, ige, Native American tribes, eh, alcela blura, amri'gela, gukra, eh, lil'ya'kl, eh, tetel, eh, la government dretir, eh, independent, inside, eh, ti al, United States of America, eh, gukra, ul'tu'ra, sugan, eh, lor'ut, eh, tetel, eh, eh, la break, eh, ige, l'ammunik tir, tir, mm, interesting work experience, eh, blaringi, nga lnamini. Eh, oru'se, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, awa'ul mu'ur, se, lurel, eh, in foreign service and international relations. So, from nineteen ninety four to two thousand, gamle, charge the affairs, and deputy chief of mission, eh, embassy, eh, gith, eh, nga ra Washington DC. Eh, sena l'nga ti'ang, eh, nga ti'al, obis, mm, basically, mirula, rogu', lurel, eh, ambassador, awera albor, niya, ambassador, eh, se gidel time, dimla, eh, ambassador. Eh, te'adiregal, sel time, eh, blura bela, diregan, no'du'gurits. Ma, awera sing, me liaison office, eh, nineteen ninety four, ingnamo, girel embassy, le, gada, namo, independent, eh, blu, nga, Mister Oru'um, eh, amlar, se, transition, eh, ti al, obis, from a liaison office to a full fledged embassy. Mong, me girel, o'si, eh, ra, be'as, eh, el bas, el bas, yel, bo'riya embassy, eh, mo'create, eh, sel, was, eh, diplomatic mission. Eh, ige, nga riya, skump, gada, ma, independent, eh, blu. Mong, sena l'oko, lomu'rti al orior, eh, mm, while, black, clo, te mel, eh, ma se, eh, al, aravela, nga ra blura, amri'gela, eh, guk, manya, issues, eh, til, eh, lobe'ngela, immigration, ma lobe, be'ira, other issues with government entities, eh, alcela blura, amri'gela, diregal, me mit, lo ventri, eh, eh, ombalir, amri'gela, eh, me soril, investor, blura bela, eh, diregal, me mit, lo ventri, eh, bat'ogel, adro ol'wi, eh, ma, diregal, staff, eh, tir, wal, gukra, lor'ul, eh, al'wil, lo ventri, eh, mong, unsi, il gukra, mo'wi, la'adu, eh, adro ngal'el, eh, blura, amri'gela, ma blura bela. Eh, diregal, mla riya, te mel, mit, lo ventri, eh, obengela, US Department of State, eh, US Department of Interior, eh, diregal, well, improve, eh, ige, l'communication, eh, guk, obis, eh, gide, nga ra, Washington DC, lobe'ngela, blura bela. Ma, mla riya, te ell, diregal, attend, eh, State of the Union address, ma ige, eh, inaugural ceremonies, eh, national convention, sel wal, lo ventri, eh, blura bela, eh, sena l'sur, eh, sel, guk, dro'el, eh, charge the affairs, eh, deputy chief of mission, eh, embassy, eh, gira, eh, Washington DC. Eh, se gidel time, eh, Mister President, eh, diregal, ndirga'gal, establish, eh, obis, eh, gira, UN. Mong, nga, Mister Oru'um, eh, amle, girel, nga ra, Washington DC, eh, guk, te'gal, eh, mongali, mora, eh, mora, New York, eh, ling, eh, da, ma, eh, do'urits, eh, blu, mong, namor, niya, nga, eh, led, eh, United Nations. Ma, Mister Oru'um, eh, diregal, nga riya, te mel, guk, mora, UN, eh, diregal, me, eh, leader, eh, delegation, eh, blura bela, eh, mora, UN, eh, me attend, eh, diregal, UN General Assembly Meetings, eh, me participate in the general debate, eh, diblo'ol, nga riya, se, eh, UN General Assembly Meeting, eh, eh, onyerul, chusti, eh, September, eh, be'kra. Eh, diregal, in that capacity, eh, guk, omte'rigi, del nga, blura, UN, mla riya, te ell, eh, mutal'gesa, eh, al'wil, eh, rilgi, lobe'ngela, bat'ogel, blura, blu'at. Eh, diregal, moriya, wa'iklo, te mel, diregal, network, lo ventri, eh, ige, l'omos, eh, small island states. Sena nga, eh, Mr. President, eh, unbat'ogel, ma'klo, blu, nga riya, eh, gide, me ge'gari, eh, blu, eh, wal, gukra, mi'tu, tangre, eh, del mo'odu', eh, mo'odu'ol, dagar, gith. Mong, nga riya, guk, eh, to'ubets, eh, al'dabe, eh, blura, blu'at, eh, ige, eh, guk, eh, ram, ge'gari, eh, blu, amotma, eh, mansepi, eh, gukra, eh, geyng, sena l'asu, eh, guk, eh, promote, eh, agenda, tir, alcela, UN. Ma, ige gide, eh, del'wil, eh, lor'ul, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, lo ventri, eh, blura bela, eh, guk, nga, se, capacity, eh, ngil, diregal, ulmo se, eh, obis, eh, gira, UN, eh, which, ndirga'gal, bo'ri'il, sel time. Eh, oru'se, eh, Mister President, eh, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, guk, medisai, eh, del mut, eh, mu', eh, ba'gal, mer blura bela. Masela, l'oko, l'mobile, main, eh, eru'ra, from two thousand one to two thousand three, eh, guk, l'iora, private sector. L'iora, alcela, ta'ra subsidiary, ma lobe, nga li'ela, ombalir, eh, eh, bela, transfer and terminal company, nga riya, guk, eh, partner, eh, Western Pacific International Marketing, te'ak, guk, to'ora shipping, which, eh, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, me manager, eh, from two thousand one to two thousand three. Eh, oru'ra, two thousand three, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, wa'ul mu'ur, se, guk, eh, public, eh, service, eh, ngi, eh, alcela blura bela. Eh, nga ma, blura, eh, adra'ira, eh, guk, ma, medongali, eh, me, principal, eh, aira, eh, elementary school, from two thousand three to two thousand nine. Eh, oru'se, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, di'regal, guk, medchins, eh, eh, guk, eh, oreler, eh, alcela, blura, eh, eh, alcela, government, eh, gith, mong, guk, eh, mobile, eh, mo', director, eh, Bureau of Marine Resources, from two thousand nine to two thousand fourteen. Eh, sena l'nga se, eh, eh, ta'ra, eh, guk, eh, plen chief, eh, mo'ur, ngi, eh, me create, eh, the new Bureau of Tourism, eh, eh, mla'ngi, eh, eh, create, eh, ti al tourism, eh, mergo, eh, l'ol, mo', senior compliance specialist, after his resignation, until his resignation in February of twenty twenty two, eh, earlier this year. Eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, di'regal, ghi, mal, ghi, medongali, gide, eh, adra'ira, eh, Mister President. Eh, me, no twenty years, eh, server, member, eh, am'rumel, bay, te'at, ti'al, ol'wi, eh, gide, eh, aira, eh, Senator Mo'SAW. Eh, nga, lnamini, eh, Mister President, eh, me server, eh, chairman, eh, amal, bat'ogel, hamiti, eh, mal, notable, eh, nga, di'regal, mla riya, time, eh, blle, vice speaker, eh, diregal, me speaker, eh, eh, ol'wi, eh, gide, eh, am'rumel, bay. Ma, hamiti, eh, eh, me li, usel, mora, nga lnamini, ma, kura, di'molda, eh, ige, eh, hengzi, eh, gira, eh, questioner, eh, se, guk, confirmation, eh, hearing, eh, lel hold, eh, riya, hamiti, eh, July seven, eh, twenty twenty two, te'angle, last week, eh, Mister President. Eh, di guk, ais, eh, was, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, mal, silvidya, hamiti, eh, was, eh, mal willing, eh, hamit, eh, dedicated, eh, mo'server, ambassador, gide, eh, mora, blura, Taiwan, eh, mo'senet, eh, go'ngir, eh. Eh, eh, hamiti, eh, di'regal, mal, understand, eh, was, eh, nga, Mister Oru'um, eh, mal, me, instrumental, eh, ma lobe, eh, mal, me, klong, eh, 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 me transition, eh, sel, Palau Liaison Office, eh, nga ra, Washington DC, to a full fledged embassy. Eh, eh, diregal, hamiti, eh, mal, understand, eh, sel, guk, eh, me, dro'el, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, wal, lo ventri, gide, eh, mora, UN, ma, hamiti, eh, diregal, gukra, me, under, Sol, momdangla, eh, w'te swel, girel, se, eh, guk, mo'ventri, gide, eh, mora, blura, Taiwan, eh, dira, se, eh, sena nga, eh, UN, eh, ma, Washington DC, eh, ige, eh, guk, eh, experience dringi, eh, mal, di l'iora, lobe'ngela, blura, amri'gela, eh, sena nga, eh, UN, eh, guk, bat'ogel, blu, eh, blen, eh, work closely with them, mong umranga, was, eh, se gide, eh, diplomatic experience dringi, eh, di'regal, mal, se, eh, mo'swir, ti al, eh, posting, eh, me, ambassador, eh, blura, eh, mora, eh, blura, Taiwan. Eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, di'regal, lulu'ais, eh, ra hamiti, eh, was, eh, se, eh, mal, lurel, eh, diplomacy, eh, ma lobe, eh, diplomat, eh, eh, girel, eh, ng'usel, national interest, ma lobe, eh, se, direction, eh, ra blura, bela, which, eh, o, o, tar, eh, clear, national government, eh, ma ol'wi, eh, el ng'ul, mo', wa'el, nga, eh, led, eh, l'ol, ter, ngi, mo'sel, blu, eh, guk, ngi, eh, blut, eh, mo'ventri, eh. Mong, eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, se, eh, girel, hamit, eh, nga, eh, he will be, hamit, eh, se gyal, negotiation, eh, discussion, eh, omsaw, eh, v'ol'ul, eh, ambassador, eh, girel, lo ventri, eh, se, direction, ma lobe, eh, mm, national interest, eh, gith, eh, set by the executive branch, the Ministry of State, ma ol'wi, eh, gal'ul'ul'au. Eh, Mister Oru'um, eh, alu'ais, eh, ma'ra, hamiti, eh, se, ma'klo, eh, mal important, eh, se, integrity, eh, ambassador. Ling, ambassador, eh, de'gal, se, dingi, eh, decide, eh, was, eh, nga rang, eh, mo'position, eh, blura bela. Niya girel, eh, can see, eh, eh, orior, eh, obengel, executive branch, Ministry of State, eh, te'set, eh, se, direction, eh, ambassador, eh, mo', mo'bang, eh, lo ventri, eh, blura, bela, eh, mora, se, blu, lo'om.
...
The history of the language is that the proposal amended in PUC. Essentially, what PUC is asking us to do is line out, strike out lines fourteen through seventeen. But it says, "I will not change the amendment." PUC has added additional medical insurance other than national health insurance, which already departed. Although it is a legal law, it is a legal policy, and it is enough. It says, "It will allow additional coverage from some other entity." It says, "It is more costly for operations of PUC." It is more costly for operations of PUC. It is more costly for the others to be allowed, the moral, or rather, not to be. It says, "I do not intend to change it." It is not understood, so it is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed to be listed, because it is not allowed by PUC. It allows other health insurance other than national health insurance. It is not allowed, Mr. President, to allow it.
Senator Tabelwal.
Representative Taki, you have received a certificate of teacher certification. You have received a contract from the university. The CEO said, "I will not accept it." I will not accept it. The teacher certification certificate is not accepted. It is not a contract. If it is a contract, then it is not accepted. It is not allowed. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed by PUC. It is not allowed by PUC. It is not allowed.
Senator Issal.
The page two of the document is five and more lines. Page five and more lines, page eighteen. Mr. Issal, it is not allowed to act any legislation with uses, prevent the implementation of any rate increase that has been adopted as provided for this section, without concurrently enacting a subsidy to PUC. It says, "It is not allowed to be registered." It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed to be registered. No, they are working for the people of Palau, although it is a legal law. It is not allowed to be registered. The CEO said, "This is not right." He said, "The chairman of the House..." But Mr. Frank said, "It is not allowed." Anyway, it is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Jesus, God.
Senator Rudima.
President Malungil has replied. The president said, "It is not allowed." The point is, it is not allowed in the Senate. It is not allowed in the Senate. It is not allowed in the Senate. The point is, it is not allowed in the Senate. Page two, page five, and more than eighteen. Sometimes, it is not allowed in the Senate. Mr. President, even if it is not allowed, it is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed in the Senate, Mr. President. It reflects the frustrations of the people. It is not allowed to be registered. Whereas, it is not allowed to screw up a number of things. It is not allowed to be registered. Mr. President, similar cases, social security, pension. It is not allowed to be registered. 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 It is unconstitutional. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed to be registered. Mr. President.
It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Floor leader.
Mr. President, the bill, the Senate Bill 1169, the Senate Bill 1169. And we are discussing the three original files, the technicality of the procedure, introduction of the bills. We are discussing the issue of withdrawing the motion, the original bill. And also, the multiple cases, the process, the introduction of the bill. The method of the law. Mr. President.
The motion is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Floor leader.
Mr. President, the first reading, the Senate Bill 1170.
The motion is not allowed. The floor.
Senate Bill Number 1170. A bill for an act to enact a budget law for fiscal year 2023 through the authorization and appropriation of the amount of 91,914,000 from the National Treasury for the annual general operations, special revenue, and debt service budget of the Republic of Palau for the fiscal year ending September 30, 2023, to amend the RPL 1110, the Corporations Act, and for related purposes. It is not allowed. The amount of the 2023 law and authorization, appropriation, and total million. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The law is clear. The National Treasury, the general operations, special revenue, debt service budget, and fiscal year end, September 30, 2023. The RPL Number 1110, the Corporation's Act, is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president, it is not allowed. Surangal S. Whips Jr.
It is not allowed. It is not allowed for 2023. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The chairman of the House, Chairman Avisemins. Chairman Avisemins said, "It is not allowed." It is not allowed. 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 The regular session is not allowed. Mr. President. Senator Issal.
Mr. President, I am the chairman of the House. I said, "It is not allowed." It is not allowed. My expenditure is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The FAA is going forward. It is not allowed. 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 End of the third quarter financial report.
Okay, Senator Inabo, take note. Maria Sol, please comment on the bill. Yes? Senator Tabelwal.
President, I am the chairman of the House. I am the chairman of the House. I am the chairman of the House. It is not allowed to be registered. It is not allowed. 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 It is not allowed.
Senator Inabo, please. Okay. Floor leader.
Mr. President. I said, "The first reading." It is not allowed. The first reading, Senate Bill 1171.
The motion is not allowed. The floor.
Senate Bill Number 1171. A bill for an act to establish the Office of the National Security Coordinator to promote the national security of the Republic of Palau and for other related purposes. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The National Security Coordinator promotes the national security of the Republic of Palau. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president, the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Maria Sol, please. Senator Savao.
Mr. President, the important bill is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The vice president is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. National security is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Mr. President, I am the chairman of the House. It is not allowed. The vice president is not allowed. It is not allowed. Mr. President. It is not allowed. The coordinator is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The coordinator is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The office is not allowed. The coordinator is not allowed. It is not allowed. Mr. President, the committee is not allowed. It 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 is not allowed. I am the chairman of the House. It is not allowed. 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 Mr. President.
Okay. It is not allowed. 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 Chairman JGA. Floor leader.
President, the first reading, the Senate Bill 1172.
The floor.
Senate Bill Number 1172. A bill for an act to implement Regulation 7 or Chapter 5 of the International Convention on Safety of Life at Sea, 1974, as amended, to implement the International Convention on Maritime Search and Rescue, 1979, as amended, and for other related matters. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Regulation 7 or Chapter 5 of the International Convention on Safety of Life at Sea, 1974. It is not allowed. International Convention on Maritime Search, Rescue, 1979. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president, the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Maria Sol, please. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The vice president of Foreign Affairs is not allowed. The chairman of the House. Floor leader.
Mr. President, the first reading, the Senate Bill 1173.
The motion is not allowed. The floor.
Senate Bill Number 1173. A bill for an act to amend the Anti-People Smuggling and Trafficking Act, to update the republic's laws with respect to human smuggling and trafficking, and for other related matters. It is not allowed. The Anti-People Smuggling and Trafficking Act will update the human smuggling and trafficking. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president, the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Any comment? Yes? It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The chairman of the House. It is not allowed. 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 Floor leader.
The first reading, the Senate Bill 1176. The second reading, the final reading. The final reading, the one reading. The motion passed rather than final reading, Senate Bill 1146, ST1, HD1.
The floor.
Senate Bill Number 1146, ST1, HD1. A bill for an act to amend Title 35 of the Palau National Code to move the land registration officers and land registration employees from the authority of the Bureau of Lands and Surveys back to the Land Court as they were prior to the enactment of RPL 631 and for other related purposes. It is not allowed. The Title 35 of the Palau National Code will move the land registration officers and employees of the Bureau of Lands and Survey to the Land Court. It is not allowed. RPL Number 631. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president, the Senate, Hoconspaulis, by request.
Senator Inabo.
Mr. President, it is not allowed. 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 Page nine, line seventeen. If a claim was filed with the Land Court before January 1, 1989, a claimant may argue any viable theory of title, including a return of public land theory, a superior title theory, or any other recognized theory before the Land Court, regardless of the type of claim, form, or originally filed. Mr. President, the issue of a claim is not allowed. It 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 is not allowed. Mr. President.
Senator Issal.
Mr. President, it is not allowed. The major issue, the understanding of it, is the House. The most important thing, the page ten. I'm sorry. I got the right for Indian. I make a recommendation. Page six. Page twenty-three, page twenty-nine. Any claimant, the House. Any claimant who fails to personally attend or send an authorized representative to a scheduled manifestation without reasonable cause shall pay a civil penalty of $250. It is not allowed. 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 The page ten. Page six, page sixteen. Major policy decision, the House. Any technical errors, including survey errors, typographical errors in an issue, certificate of title may be corrected by the Land Court at any time on its own initiative or registered only by petition, the Land Court will open the case, blah, blah, blah. It is not allowed. The major policy decision, the House. Lastly, page ten, page twenty-six. Next page, page eleven. Page fifteen. Major issue of the House. It is not allowed. Or, in Google search, it is not allowed. Or, in Google search, it is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president. Since it is initiated, it is not allowed. 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 Fifteen days, it is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The recommendation of the committee. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. At the conference, it is not allowed. 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 The president. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The Senate, the House, the president. It is not allowed. The recommendation of the committee.
Maria Sol, please. Senator Rudima.
Mr. President, it is not allowed. Committee Chair, Senator Issal. Mr. President, the chairman of the House, JGA. Mr. Chairman, the issue of the issue, the six, the eleven, the page ten of twelve. It is not allowed. Mr. Chairman, Mr. President, the committee, Senator Inabo. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Certificate of Title is questionable. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Investment. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president, the question of the House. It is not allowed. 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 The chairman. Mr. President, the rejection of the document is not allowed. It 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 is not allowed. Legal concerns, the ambiguity of it, or the moral. It is not allowed. Mr. Chairman, the reverse of the document is not allowed. It is not allowed. The president intends, Mr. President. The document is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The House of Delegates, Mr. President, the allegation is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Rightful owner, traditional owner, is not allowed. It 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 is not allowed. Mr. President, it is not allowed. 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 Mr. President.
Okay, the board of senators, Mary, Momrike, Megha.
Mr. President, the rejection of the document is not allowed. It 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 is not allowed. The bill is not allowed. Transfer. The employees, the workers. The money, the money. The sale is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The issue is not allowed. The money is not allowed. It is not allowed. The money is not allowed. It is not allowed. The information is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The final decision is not allowed. The money is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The rejection of the document is not allowed. It is not allowed. The reference is not allowed. The committee is not allowed. The issue is not allowed. The committee is not allowed. The recommendation is not allowed. The committee is not allowed. The final decision is not allowed. The final decision is not allowed. The document is not allowed. The understanding of the document is not allowed. The document is not allowed. The money is not allowed. It is not allowed. The money is not allowed. The rejection of the document is not allowed. The money is not allowed. The final decision is not allowed. The president, the question of the bill. It is not allowed. The introduction of the bill is not allowed. The separate bill. Mr. President.
Okay. My observation, the recommendation, the rejection of the bill is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The reference is not allowed. It 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 is not allowed. The floor. The floor leader, the motion.
Mr. President. The direction of the committee, the members. The final decision is not allowed. The motion passed, the final reading, the Senate Bill 1146, ST1, HD1. The members, the rejection. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed.
Mr. President. The floor.
Senator Kigow, Inabo.
No.
Senator Chanatan, Shoy Sal. Senator Stevenson, Jay Quarte.
No.
Senator TJ Imru Ramasaw.
No.
Senator Mark, Erbelau Rudima.
No.
Senator Umi Savao.
No.
Senator Kazuki Eltaps Sungino.
No.
Senator Andrew Tabelwal.
No.
Senator Mason, Yirevangel Whips.
No.
Floor leader, Cecilil Aldebela.
No.
Vice President Cry Marier.
No.
President Hoconspaulis.
No.
Mr. President, the result, twelve, zero, yes. Twelve and no, yes.
The Senate Bill 1146, ST1, HD1, it is not allowed. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. Chairman Issal, the final decision is not allowed. The floor. The floor. The floor. Senator Issal.
Yes, the president, the consent of the committee. It is not allowed. It is not allowed. The House, the president. The vice president, the issue of the independent bill. The opposition, the movement, the political. The issue is not allowed. The small issue is not allowed. The president, as we pass.
Okay. It is not allowed. Senator Issal, it is not allowed. The members, the election. It is not allowed. Trigel member ra kamiti, ay sala, dimo, ay sergmi losetan ra, e ol ngit ma di bo mol tirakla, na tngi la chairman. Flow leader.
Eh, ma dal wa se, Mr. President, eka damla rogi ra bill calendar gi, dukpo diul mora resolution calendar. Eh, the bora resolution calendar, eh, the bora referral, ngariya sel Senate Joint Resolution 11, das 26. Te sel mo otherwise, ablur bela, mo se, la gi wa President, eh, mo sebele, mo melena, au do, the, up to 20,000, 20 million. Luwa bo parta sel trans two, sel policy base, raises loan, Asian Development Bank, otherwise, President, el direklo mo, paro additional 25 million, guk mo luseura yosa ra FY 2023, el direklo, la Asian Development Bank. Directly, Mr. President, ngariya, a House, a, the bora la House Joint Resolution 11, das 35, das 7. Et te sel resolution, el mo invite ra Ambassador Amrigel, el me address ra for the joint session ra Olbira Kalulau. Mm, am, asana kamiti, malume, do mesel.
Okay, sel Senate Joint Resolution 11, das 26, el mo melena au do, a mora Senator Inavo. E ol ngit ma di regal mora adie, et tiadiregal orudle, et tiadire solution, ma, ko shpe a, a information, emgola ra Minister of Finance. Eh, sel longerunge flora, mul mora adoption. Okay.
Al wa si, Mr. President, te say gi da instruction regal, mo ber sel House Joint Resolution 11, das 35, das 7, el mora adoption. Sumu te, say gi na sekan, she da motion na amdu ngesekan, trigel rogu il gongel du oy, om tok, namoi she, flow leader. Al wa si, dabora sel B, adoption calendar, ma kmo, eh, ma da, adapt ra Senate Resolution 11, das 78, eh, don't trakler, mi iwe title.
Klerga mi iwe title.
Senate Resolution Number 11, that 78, a Senate Resolution, confirming the presidential appointment of Mr. David A. O'Rourke as the ambassador of the Republic of Palau to the Republic of China, Taiwan. Tell Senate Resolution Number 11, that 78, amo ngone, la omalke la President, ra Mr. David A. O'Rourke, el mo ambassador, ablur bela, el mora Republic of China, Taiwan. Tell Senate Resolution Number 11, that 78, alul dersia President of Senate, Hoconz Paulas, by request.
She is sel resolution, el mo, la era, Dave O'Rourke, el mo ambassador, mora Taiwan, ma ngariya sol megagaminta, Senator Inavo.
Mr. President, ta kamsula, a tele rakte, e ol ngit al wa sing, ngura amla mo regular session ra July, ma, te resolution, ngariya day, te junar ngi, ma, eh, special session, ma di, the, technical, eh, the, update, ringi, bo sebele, al may. E trigal malu tel teale, malol ngita, support ra, rabekel Senator, se, te, lomalke la, eh, Mr. O'Rourke, el mo, te ergid al ambassador, ra, el mora Republic of China, Taiwan. Eh, sera, hearing ngariya, yang man lo, o omaltal wa sing, he has been, eh, ngariya background, ringi, na diplomacy, eh, mal mo, hu, ah, umranga, wa sing, mo, te ergid al, al blur bela, el diakal bo, ra, atomali, el bodo, ra, eh, amo murur ngi, ma kmalurita support ra, wo Senator, solia, Mr. President.
Solia Senator Inavo, ngariya ngod, ndia, sumdian, ega du mosenkiyo, ma, klerga, roza balot, surtrises. But el mukadon sessioner gi, del mora order. Ma, el di se la senkiyo, el mora, Mr. David O'Rourke, el mo ambassador, el mora Republic of Palau to the Republic of China, China, Taiwan. At 12, edi gan no, congratulations. Eh, me kuntira surtrises, but el mukadon session, el mora order, flow leader.
President, eka, trigal ngara, adoption, resolution calendar, the borsa next resolution, ma kmo, adapt ra Senate Resolution 11, that 80. Don't trakler, mi iwe title.
Klerga mi iwe title.
Senate Resolution Number 11, that 80, a Senate Resolution, confirming the presidential reappointment of Ms. Romana Wong to serve as a member of the Palau Community College Board of Trustees for a term of four years. Tell Senate Resolution Number 11, that 80, amo ngone, la omalke la President, ra Ms. Romana Wong, el mo adala Palau Community College Board of Trustees, el konsela ewarak. Tell Senate Resolution Number 11, that 80, alul dersia President of Senate, Hoconz Paulas, by request.
She is sel solution, el mo, la era, Ms. Romana Wong, el mo adala PCC Board of Trustees, Senator Tabalwal.
Wa si, President, ngutu ra, omi lurer, de lobengela, Ms. Wong, eh, ebem kuli ngit wa sing, ngaga amal blakta, laurereel, et tiang, mutro malkil, mo, kultro abekla, se medo on, al utal blay, e bo dollar, ilo giwa, pro, sol.
She da motion na amdu ngesekan, trigel rogu il gongel du oy, om tok, may, da senkiyo, bay applause. Flow leader.
Oh, Mr. President, kada congratulate, eh, Ms. Romana Wong, na, ma, confirmation of Senate, te la gi wa acclamation. The borsa next, sel resolution, ma kmo, adapt ra Senate Resolution 11, that 81.
She da motion na amdu ngesekan, Senator Rudima.
Solia, Mr. President, ta teale, ah, kote ma di, mutro swakal mo, rengasulela, President Whips, le di le ngi, ega egid al tarak, eka reel goi, goi gel, Mr. Joseph Anastasio, el mo, te ergid ra, board ra, PNSP. Mr. President, eh, le, le, atender sel hearing, eh, ngariya di imoltoy, di li, malgora, eh, eh, amlo, donalom, ringi, le, wal perspective, ra, adel, ngi, ega egid al goi, gamle recipient. Gamle recipient ra PNSP, at the same time, eng, le, mukatat, adon gela, ngi, ma PNSP. Dinglo, du le, trata toy, wa sing, el se la ega time, le, ngi, amle recipient, eng, wa di, le, adon gela, ngi, ma PNSP, wa di, ble, tiel togra au do. Gukti mil ngi, sel time, bo, temel al, awor da chek, eng, expect ringi, al se la mail. Ma, trata toy, di li, Mr. President, ta wa si, bo, ta, ma bo, adal tiel board ra PNSP, eng, swa, mo melisi, era daluil ra PNSP, ma trigal recipient, el gorangari, sel personal relationship, ndiakal gukti tiel, badengela, au do, malu, chek, se, awalgora relationship ra recipient, ta ma, PNSP. El goramowal, mo, subi ira, sel netingela, Chairman Tabalwal, le wa si, mo, ngariya, eh, or outreach program, malu, bang, muryol, mukatmokel, mo, sebele, ngal recipient, le, mo, eh, badengela, wa si, PNSP, e diakadi lo, mskaka chek. Ngariya ega be bira, 30, la togra PNSP, di regal sebele, lolonge share a recipient. Dim ne swakal state, say gi da point, Mr. President, eh, direklo mal support, ngara namni. Eh, with that, Mr. President, eh, swakal mo move, ma da, bodo, sebele, da senkiyo, lo giwa, pro, el mora, Mr. Anastasio.
Malu ngil gaminta, o she issue time, eh, motion, el mo senkiyo, bay acclamation, trigel rogu il gongel du oy, om tok. Wa si, senkiyo, bay acclamation. Flow leader.
Hi, Mr. President, te direklo, congratulate, eh, Mr. Joseph Anastasio, ngi, amla, mga confirmation, ringi, mo, la board ra PNSP, la, lu giwa, eh, unanimus, pro tra Senate. The borsa, eh, lulubong, el resolution, ma kmo, ma da, adapt ra House Joint Resolution 11, that 35, that 7.
She da motion na amdu ngesekan, ma klerga mi iwe title.
House Joint Resolution Number 11, that 35, that 7, a House Joint Resolution, to convene a joint session of the House of Delegates and the Senate of the 11th Olbira Kalulau, and to formally invite His Excellency John Hennessy Neland, United States Ambassador to the Republic of Palau, to address the four joint session of the 11th Olbira Kalulau on Tuesday, July 19, 2022, in the Senate Chamber of the Capitol at 10 a.m. Tell House Joint Resolution Number 11, that 35, that 7, a om godon, ra joint session, ra House, House, Maseneta, 11th Olbira Kalulau, invite ra His Excellency John Hennessy Neland, United States Ambassador, el mora ablur bela, el mo address ra four joint session, ra 11th Olbira Kalulau, ra Tuesday, July 19, 2022, ra tru, klo ra tutau, ra alse la Senate Chamber, ngara Capitol. Tell House Joint Resolution Number 11, that 35, that 7, alul dersia Speaker Sabino Anastasio.
Flow leader.
President, tiya, te resolution, eh, ega al be, ke resolution, sel invite ra, adel me, eh, ra joint session, ega tal tabalol blay. Ega du spe, resolution, el murur ngi, tiya, wa si, namu, eh, klerga, na iwe title, el invite ra Ambassador Amrigel. E di regal, mre ngi, ma singal ambassador, eh, Mr. President, eh, di regal, ma, ma, marika, muabla, eh, retire, ma additar, ma, tiel, public service, ringi, meng, tiya di regal, amo lobongol time, na, do, ringi, meng, ma appropriate, tiel, mrengasulela speaker. Eh, il desuvi, tiya, il, luda swa, na se bo, sebele, guk, ngati ale, de, rengasiya ambassador, ablamrigel, ngi, di regal. Malu masa, ablur bela, ra, ega bato, lumi, services, ringi, lumi, te ra Amrigel, ngar bela. No, ngi, tukma, se, di regal, bo lobengel tiel, el mo, joint resolution, asumu gada, eh, ma, adapt ta tiel resolution, eh, bo lobengel tiel joint session, eh, eh, bo sebele, gutmakli, eh, resolution, ega tal tabalol blay, el mo, wal, lo, rengasulela ambassador, le, ngi, tiel, ngi, wa, bo, lulubong, time, na, do, ur ngi, e guk trangasil, me, address ra Olbira Kalulau. Se wa di ngi, te.
Mr. President, Senator Isal.
Mr. President, eh, of regoria, kurawlu ngit, la wa si, kuramal katengel, el ba, the invite ra Ambassador, ablamrigel. Ni, do, ramadala, Olbira House, Maseneta, ega du, explain, ra, reasoning, behind, ringi, magalal direct, lungi la, om, sodim, bo blakta, da, adobe la, wa sing. Mm, rakhmal toku bets, lu ul, eh, lurele, langar gu bak, reka, namumregi, eh, eh, du ra, ega du, amru ri tiya. Eh, nar tiel, amte ra, kablimet, ra, pro wal, sol.
Senator, Nireyvangel, Chairman of Foreign Affairs Committee.
So ra, teale, Mr. President, eh, takdirigal, mal, apishay, tra, guk, directioner, blal, set, ringa, galing, segi, da, House of Delegates, lon ngit, ra, US Ambassador, eh, John Hennessy Neland, el mo, luya, joint address, el mora Olbira Kalulau. Maltoy, ndirga, eh, sitting ambassador, eh, jointly, address, eh, Olbira Kalulau. Ningariya sitting ambassador, el individually, na address ra Senate, eh, di regal, na address ra House of Delegates, on their own. Ndi, akumral, wa se, sel guk, osingela, House of Delegates, al, eh, trigibul, korawal toku bets, ngan, US, US Ambassador, John Hennessy Neland. Le, tiaki, nganga, actually, se, la, 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 ablur bela, on, dimla, ka, tele, lem, mal, temi, le, he came in COVID time. Menga, ngariya temel, merakwarentin, le, trigibul, goramrigel, la, awa, sel, wal, trip, ringi, merablu bela, initially. And during his tenure, el sorbel US Ambassador, merablu bela, eh, we know, wa sing, through the United States, eh, US mission, el ngi, eh, eh, US Ambassador, eh, ega bato, ngi, swa ra COVID, el ngi, la, la, sablu, ramrigel, merablu bela. Eh, was through, eh, coordination, eh, US Ambassador, ngarablu bela. O she seal time, eh, nganga, adiakadi lo, el sum, el guk, mora, tarawriyol, nganga, am, ngariya, tele, la, attend, sel, Fourth of July, eh, celebration. Englo, ay, sera, regid, la wa si, tiya, mo last, el, lurele, working in the US Department of State, more retire. Ma kumral, wa sing, ngi wa giwa, egi, ndirregal, ma appropriate, al joint clear address, eh, Olbira Kalulau, address, eh, Senate, my House, through a joint session, ma, I hope, egi, korak, trigibul, kor, at medisi, se, la, ra, ra, rengar, ala, brul, wa si, why now? Why this ambassador? Egi da, nar, mingsa, joint address from, eh, visiting, eh, foreign ministers, and so forth, ma, I hope, e se, korak, trir, ma, saura, teale, Mr. President.
Senator Cuarte.
Solia, Mr. President, te talteale, kada trigal me, eh, passa first reading, eh, sel, sel bill, e girela, National Security Act of 2022. Global goal, eh, hmm, the recognize, eh, effort, eh, ega egid al Ambassador, His Excellency John Hennessy Neland, Ambassador, ablamrigel, merablu bela. Girela COVID, dinga, wundashe wa sing, diakasal, diakasal, togra COVID, eh, Mr. President, togra security. Eh, global goal, wundashe, eh, belo, do, ma da, bo, ngariya, tele, del, trigibul, expand, eh, osingela, ablur amrigel, ma, egi, dal, adobe la, girela, security. Security, diakal di, togra, military, togra economics, togra health, togra social welfare. Ma kuli ngit, la wa si, tiye di, bo, teale, lungu, me, e bo, se, eden, meralo, mes, eh, security, in a broader sense. Le, el altan, eh, diakal, sakla, military threat, el merbelau, ndi gi, tiel, de, namumregi, el masa, eh, a resolution, el mo, melena au do, because economic, economic security, gi, da, diakal. Eh, am pack negotiation, ngariya, ma, wundashe, mal appropriate, eh, Olbira Kalulau, eh, set, la stage, la wa si, mm, abelar, el, ang, ngati, egi, dal, dire situation, gi, ter, ma address a budget. If we are truly your friend, eh, gira, del, expand, eh, mut, el discuss, eh, security, in a broader sense, and al di, military, sol.
Solia, Senator Cuarte, Senator Mariur.
Mr. President, takdirigal, momentar, beklade, eh, di regal, goram, misert tiang, la wa sing, goram, ngariya, ulel, la wa si, bo, sebele, du, lia, goray, la, resolution, wa, goram, rengasulela, galath. Di se, lomisert tiel resolution, ra House, ma, mukatnok, le, wal, di regal, blalstat, luringa saul. Ma, kaba, eh, ngit, la wa si, bo, sebele, ega egid, bato, ma, amdu, eh, ega blal, Senator Cuarte, al sumu, ngariya, te, ale, mil, sebele, da, da, lo, tur ngi. Eh, bo, mal, bo, tegi, di, resolution, wal, do, rengasulel, eh, meri, egi, dal, issue, ma, ega, blal, mukatnok, me, belau. Eh, du, she seal time, eh, invite, ringi, mal, men, ngariya, bo, sebele, mo, do, le, saud, da, egi, di, di, ngi, ngarau, di, sel, Olbira Kalulau. Al sumu, goradi, ngi, le, say gi, di, gorongti, la wa si, bo, sebele, misa, egi, di, ngi, da, tur, al se, tiel, resolution. Eh, da, adapt, me, dolgora, ra, da, House, ma, di, ngi, le, da, tur, sebele, el, dilgengi, ma, di, bo, wa si. Solia, President.
Senator Rudima.
Mr. President, eh, ma, saule, takdirigal, wa di, multla, kagele, te ngela, taqal, Senator Isal, eh, Mr. President, ra question, ra, a joint session, el mo entertain, ra, taqal, Ambassador, Amri, Brur, Amrigel, le, indireklo, di swa, dal, state, eh, Mr. President, eh, se, sel, amgi, ba joint, eh,